Direction to staff, 1B, another general service administration, direction to staff. Item 2A, claim of Stacy Pedro was denied and confidential minutes were approved. Would mine standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're on to public matters, not on the agenda, discussion item only, no action to be taken, any person may address the board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report and recommendation for possible action at a subsequent board meeting. Please note there's a three-minute time limit.
Point of order, do we need to have Zoom approved for?
Oh, we didn't do that yet, but I'll get to it.
Okay, all right, I just want to-
No problem.
Okay, sorry.
Anything from the supervisors? Supervisor Crew, I'm muted.
Now I am. Now I am. No, I had nothing.
Hold on just for a second, your sound is just a little bit low. Try speaking again.
Hello, hello there. Good morning.
Hello, Pat, you'd mentioned something about a moment of silence, I believe, earlier.
Are we ready for that?
Yes, we are.
All right. I think almost everybody in Amador County, love him or hate him, or had, everyone had an opinion on Stan Lukowicz. And he died this past week, and he was a mover and a shaker, and a philanthropist, and helped an awful lot of people, and loved Jackson and loved Amador County. And I think in reverence to him, I would like we have a moment of silence before we get this meeting really rolling. That's our rep with the chairman.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and board members.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Good morning, members of the board and staff.
Good morning.
I come today with a request. I've sent a public records request about a year ago and received a number of documents related to the agreement that the county reached with the ion band. Among those documents was a letter, or memo, from the band committing to provide the county, the Board of Supervisors, with updated well data for the wells that are alleged to be used for the, to provide water for their project. On many occasions, I have asked at the board desk, and I've even inquired of some of the members of the board individually, when that data might be available, and if I could get a copy of it. It's now been a year. Just last week, I sent emails to four members of this board, and I have not received a single reply as to any of the questions that I ask. The data from these wells twenty, over twenty years ago, was insufficient for the project as then proposed. They have since drilled a well with inside of Highway 49. If you have sufficient water for your project, you don't drill wells. I'd just like to have the updated well data that the ion band committed to this board to provide. Perhaps this is just another one of the promises, commitments unkept by this group of people. Not to mention the over $300,000 in property taxes that they owe Amador County. The record decision from 2012 and the FEIS both contain commitments by the ion band that when the property is going to trust, they will make an annual payment in lieu of the taxes. No such payment has been made since 2020 for the ten parcels that were taken into trust. I just want the water data. Is it possible? Is there any update on when the ion band might be providing the water data? Because it's my suspicion and belief at this time that they are going to build a project, and then they're going to come to this county for the water because they don't have any out there. So is there any, any member of this board or staff who's willing to say, "We have the data, and here it is," or, "We'll contact the ion band, and we'll get a date when the data would be available?"
We'll bring it in an advisement.
Did, did the members receive my email with these questions?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
How long does it take you to respond to a citizen? I mean, literally, how long does it take? You get an email, how long does it take to respond?
Many years.
Okay, anybody else under public?
Dominic Moreno set a creek fire. So I'm here today, first of all, to thank the board. Over the last few years, local government fire has really thrived in Amador County. We had a patch a few years ago where we had some issues we all know about, but we made it through those patches, and everything's doing well. I'm here to address a couple of things. So one of them is, there were some comments made last week at a AFPD meeting about services provided. And there was a comment made that, trying to compare Eldorado County and Amador County. And if you really look at the comparison, Eldorado County over the last fifteen years has actually closed fire stations and got rid of their volunteers in that county. So they've actually lowered the level of service in parts of that county. Amador County over the last fifteen years has done the opposite. They've increased the level of service, opened more stations. AFPD disassembled another station in Wolf Creek, which is going to serve the citizens of Carbondale, Trobe area. So that comparison was made, I wanted, basically looking at the facts that we are on the growth cycle here, they're on the decline cycle in Eldorado County. Second thing that was brought up was about responses of CAL FIRE engines on local government calls. I gave you guys a chart, this chart right here. That shows wildfires over the last twenty-five years roughly. And as you can see, the trend for actual wildfires is down, is going down, it's been on a downhill decline. Now, we do have bigger fires. We have a lot more press, social media about fires, so we hear about them a lot more. But overall, we actually have less fires over time than we did twenty-five years ago. The next sheet, which looks like this, shows, on the red is the actual calls that CAL FIRE responds to for wildland fires off the first chart. The yellow color is the calls that CAL FIRE goes to that are not part of their mission. So CAL FIRE's mission is to provide fire protection and fire prevention in the forestry SRA lands. They also have contracts where they provide some local government responses. But overall, as you can see, over the last fifteen years, they have over-doubled the amount of calls they go to, local government, roughly calls. What that does, it takes them out of their main mission, which is fire prevention. Fire prevention is the main goal at CAL FIRE. When we go on fires, and the fire service is because we failed at fire prevention. So it's a reaction, not a, basically being progressive on it. So we need CAL FIRE to be out there doing the fuel reduction. If you look at the next sheet, the green line-
And that sheet you're looking at, Dominic, your red line's straight, should be, should be little wiggles in there.
Unfortunately, it's such a small number, it can't have wiggles in it. Because if you look at it, the one is 7,000, and the other number is 600,000.
Yeah, is that why, that's why it's linear, just, okay.
Yeah, just statistically-
I would've thought there'd be a little something.
Yeah, if I, if I made the chart five feet wide, I could probably have a wiggle in it. So, so basically what we're showing, so that chart there shows acreages that have been with fuel reduction. All these numbers come from CAL FIRE's website. And as you can see, they basically looking at 106,000 acres last year. The Little Hoover Commission, about five, seven years ago, did a big study, and they said that we need fuel reduction at least a million acres on state property and a million acres on federal property every year. If we don't do that, our fuel continues to grow, we can basically have more fuel per acre every year because we're not reducing or taking care of it.
I would say that they're right.
They are right. We, if you look at it, overall, we need to focus on fire prevention. I came to this board a couple of years ago, the board adopted a fuel mitigation ordinance, if you remember. I was the only person here who told you not to do it because it didn't deal with the problem, which is vacant property, property that doesn't have structures on it. And that's our biggest threat. Every single one of these fires over the last ten, twenty years that blew into cities came from vacant land, forest land, private land, whatever, got ahead of steam and blew into the cities. It wasn't the city's fault, it was the vacant land not being maintained and getting blown into them. So we in Amador County are doing a very good job, local government, at dealing with local government issues. And what we need is our partners, CAL FIRE, to deal with the state mission, which is the fire prevention and everything else. And I'd like to see the board, you know, basically address that a little more, see if we can get some more fire prevention going. I had a gentleman ask me about fire insurance, and I says, "We can't fix it. It's unfixable." Because until we fix the fire prevention program, we can't fix the fire insurance. So, just want to let you guys know that.
Well, I may have some good news for you. I spent Wednesday downtown at the Secretary of State's office advocating for our counties and our watershed through the Mountain Counties Water Resources Association, and we basically asked them for a billion or a billion and a half dollars for Prop 4. MCWR, they actually, they actually supported that bill early on, they weren't, you know, just to get out ahead of it. So they were ahead of the curve, and then basically the lobby was that, "Look, we supported you, you guys gotta support us." And really, it covers down from Mariposa County, Clearup, to Yuba, and that neighborhood there, and they're asking for that money to mitigate forest, they understore everything else, do some maintenance. So I don't know what the timeline of that will be, but we, it was a pretty big ask. I don't think I've ever asked for a billion dollars before, something new for me there.
That's, that's awesome. That's awesome.
But it could be a real game changer, and the kind of the sentiment behind the board and the people that were in the room was that Southern California is just discovering this. It's like, it never entered a lexicon, we've been doing it for thirty years.
Right.
I mean, they're like crying about having to be evacuated, how emotionally damaged they were, I'm like, you know, get out a little bit more-
It's a normal time of year here.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, people have been evacuated, you know, half a dozen times or more. So that being said, there's a little hope out there, so that money may be coming. You can, if you want this little packet, I'll give it to you, you can just look at it.
I would love to have it.
And we talked to everybody from Assemblymen to Senators to even a couple of us, knew some senior staff. So I kind of felt like maybe we made a little bit of headway with them. I think they understood our plight here a little bit more personally than they had been, so.
Good. And again, I appreciate that, and that's, we literally, we have to change our focus-
Yeah.
-from a suppression focus to a prevention focus. And until we do that, we're never going to get out of the problem we have.
No, Dominic, you're a hundred percent right, a hundred percent right on that. I tell people, not that I don't want to see this place be a desert, but just go out in a desert and take a tanker loaded gas and set it on fire.
Yeah.
The gas will burn up, and that's it.
Right. And then if, yeah, and that's the thing, is if we can get these little bits at a time where monies and stuff like that, it'd be awesome to help us.
And you know, my brother told me something a while back about fire, a lot of people here, and I tell people, you know, they go out and they say, "I did fire safety on my house." I says, "Go, go do what you're doing, and then double it, and you're getting close." It was like, if you look at the National Forest, with some of our ground around Pioneer, similar, probably not as many dead trees, but I ran some numbers, looking at British thermal units, BTUs, how many BTUs there is per acre of land, and just dead trees, and brush and stuff, I came up with, it's about, it's about a truck and trailer of gasoline per acre.
Yes.
And I kind of went, I thought, "That can't be right." So I crunched those numbers for a few hours, and I thought, "It's right." So that's why you're seeing these big old smoke combs blowing up, burning everything up. So your backyards, my advice is cut trees, brush shrubs, and cut more, and you might be getting close.
Yep.
So, might be your house you save.
Yes. Also, there is, in Sutter Creek, the Air Pollution Board, actually, we have a green waste bin there, open twenty-four hours a day, for people bring in their trimmings and everything else. So take advantage of it.
FYI for yourself, then, on your bin, your bin may not be there all year round next, next fiscal year, just giving you a heads up.
Okay. Well, we'll probably have to figure a way to find some money to get that, because it's used year-round.
I understand.
I think we can go over two-hundred thousand pounds a year out of that thing, out of the environment, so.
Is that chipper helping?
Chipper is helping. Because we're actually, we've decreased the amount of times that thing gets changed out.
What's going on in Republic is raising their rates on bins and stuff, so.
There's, we're gonna have to probably look at doing maybe some, I think they have those burners, what are those called, those?
Yeah, airbox burners.
Airbox burners, those things, we're gonna have to start looking at doing things like that.
The only thing is, they don't do pine needles, they don't do brush, they only do logs.
Okay.
I've looked into it quite a bit, because that was one thing I wanted for the Up Country, is that it'll blow the leaves and everything else out of the box.
Okay. Because we have to figure something out, because we have so much stuff out there.
Right, no, I totally agree.
I always tell people is, if you think about, if your wife puts two bags of garbage at the door, and you only take one out, the next day she does two, and you take one out, after a week, you have seven bags, after a month, that's what's happening in our county, is this pile in.
I agree.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the garbage, you're talking fuel loading. Yeah.
Okay, anybody else under public matters? Okay, under emergency operations, we need to allow Pat Crew to do remote, and so this will be his fifth and final via under that regulation. So, Pat, next time you're on the board, we have to get your address, where you want to meet at.
Okay.
So now we need to have a motion to accept-
Move. Second.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. We're on to approval of the agenda. Call for a motion.
It's moved.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
You're muted.
Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew, sorry. Supervisor Carnell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Okay, that passes five-zero. Anybody on the public want to talk about approval of items on the consent agenda? Okay, board, Zoom? Okay, call for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. We're on to approval of the agenda. Call for a motion.
It's moved.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
You're muted.
Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew, sorry. Supervisor Carnell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Okay, that passes five-zero. Anybody on the public want to talk about approval of items on the consent agenda? Okay, board, Zoom? Okay, call for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Carnell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto.
Aye.
Okay, again, passes five-zero. Now we're on to public hearings at nine AM, establishment of Amador County Tourism District, Marketing District, and assessment. And who's presenting? Have to still ask.
So, good morning, Kathleen Mahan for Amador Council of Tourism. We have Laura Walts and Tracy Burkner. And since we've been spending a lot of time with you over the last several months, we have a short and sweet presentation for you today, but we're going to let Laura kick it off with some new wording.
So we've taken to heart some of the questions from the board and some of the feedback from the public, and have worked on some language for carving out a, an exclusion for the specific set of the smallest short-term vacation rentals. Did we put that on there, is on there?
Yes. Can we go to the last slide? Thank you.
This way everybody can take a look at it. So the intention here was to allow for an exemption for short-term vacation rentals that are really substantially different than even the smallest bed and breakfasts, and so oftentimes in vacation rental ordinances, there's a differentiation between what are called shared rentals and whole-home rentals. So shared rentals is kind of, this is kind of where we, we came to this concept with. So what we would allow for is an exemption of a short-term vacation rental that fit all of the criteria in here. So that is going to be either a rental unit that is a single room located in an owner's primary residence, or the rental unit is an accessory dwelling unit or converted garage, which does not have a full kitchen, and therefore is not suitable for long-term occupancy.
Question on that.
Yes.
Would an accessory dwelling unit have a kitchen?
Not all of them do. Some of them don't have a full kitchen, and then maybe that's-
What I mean, would they be exempt, the one that has a kitchen?
No, not if it has a full kitchen.
Okay.
Yeah. If it does not have a full kitchen, if it has a microwave, a hot plate, that's not, but some, basically the idea being, it's not something that could otherwise be used as a full-time residence for someone. The owner of the property would need to be present during when the unit is being rented. And the rental unit is the only short-term vacation rental unit that the property owner owns in Amador. So therefore, they cannot own two short-term vacation rentals that are whole homes and still ask for their ADU to be exempted. So the idea being, they operate one single unit that is located on their property. And I think we gave Greg some language that's maybe a little bit more in-depth than this, but this is basically covers the, they would have to then apply for an exemption to, because the issue with the, the reason they'd have to apply for an exemption is we do not have the data on which units comply with this. So if an owner feels that they comply, they could apply to the Amador Council of Tourism for an exemption. They may be asked to provide photos or some sort of documentation proving that they fall into this category in order to verify compliance. But essentially, this is the, we felt like this was, you know, a distinct enough category of rental to allow for an exemption on these.
Yeah, the exemption, I'd rather be simpler than more complex. If they want to be exempt, just let them be exempt. I mean, it's, it's gonna be a lot of time and fight, if not otherwise.
Well, the problem with, if they want to be exempt, then make them exempt, is because this goes back to our earlier conversations of maintaining fairness, and based off of the properties that we have had information from, there are very few rentals that would fall into this category. So we would rather take our time and due diligence to work through the few that fall into this category, and then maintain everything as standard for proceeding with what's been presented this entire time.
What percentage do you anticipate that being?
Gosh, less than five percent, yes.
And then how many short-term rentals do we have? I mean, there's quite a few, I guess.
We don't know.
Yeah.
But we had two-hundred and something on our list.
Yeah, there was two-hundred and something on the list, and I think out of the two-hundred and something, possibly three would fall into this category.
That we know of.
That we know of. So it's a very small subset of rentals.
And, and the, and they substantially, somebody who's renting a room in their home, or maybe an ADU that they otherwise wouldn't be able to rent full-time to like a long-term residence, they do operate differently than somebody who's renting their whole home, which is much more of a competitive, competitor to bed and breakfasts and things like that. So we felt like this would allow those smallest of short-term rentals to have, who maybe aren't, aren't as similar as the other accommodations, to allow them to ask for an exemption if they feel that they're exempt, while still maintaining the fairness of not letting people who have, you know, three, there's people we've talked to, they own three or four whole-house vacation rentals. Like, allowing those people to be exempt doesn't really feel like that's in the spirit of what we're trying to do here.
Right. And so, and what makes this different is this is literally, if you are living in your home full-time, and you decide to kind of partition off an area and rent it out short-term, that's different than having a one- or two-room bed and breakfast where you're removed from that, or someone's only there, you know, part-time. So that's where this exception comes in to, you know, for the few that have reached out that have that situation.
Okay, continue on with your presentation.
Back to slide number two. So this is just, I know we've, I know we've talked about this, but just to kind of recap, you know, what is a tourism marketing district? Again, this is an improvement district designed to fund tourism-related marketing and promotional events. The assessment is paid by the visitor. It is not a tax, it is not something that the property owner is paying, it is something that is a pass-through, that the renter is paying into on a called outline item, and that's where our funding is coming from. I can let Tracy kind of go over the funding points and finish this slide out.
So the funds are used for marketing, and the, the whole group of people that are paying into it have decision-making processes. So that funding is going to be used majority for marketing and bringing people for overnight stays to Amador County. What happens then is, we will be contracting with HDL, and HDL will be managing the, that funding and the collections, and that's what they do for a number of districts throughout the country. So they are, they, that is their business and what they do. And then we will be putting together, as a group, initiatives that allow us to use our funding wisely, as we have used, use and continue to use the county funding from TOT in a, in a, in a well-thought-out way to bring tourism here in a thoughtful manner, and not overwhelm our community, but do it in a, in a way that does not bring everybody here on Saturday.
So, and we've kind of, we've gone over this, but again, the benefits are just doing exactly what Tracy said, bringing people in midweek, providing more jobs, more stability, allowing us to be self-sufficient with our funding, which then in turn raises the community, because again, we're bringing in more, you know, TOT dollars spent throughout Amador County, which translates to gas stations, hardware stores, supermarkets, you know, beauty shops, all, everything in, anything in between. So, so that's really, in a nutshell, what the TMD is encompassing. And I know that you guys, we've been sending over several petitions of support from all members of the community, not just lodging. And I believe Tracy's gonna ask for a show of hands.
So if we can, in essence of time, because I know we can, you've got a very large agenda today, so in essence of time, if I can ask members of the audience here, and those on Zoom, the members of the audience, if you could stand, if you support the tourism marketing district?
Those who support it.
And those who are on Zoom, if you could raise your hand and let us know if you're- And those who are on Zoom, if you could raise your hand and let us know if you're, if you're in support. So, we have a, a good group here today.
Yeah, we're trying to see-
Yes.
-who's on Zoom here. There we go. Go ahead and Heather, go through all the-
You can close out of the presentation if you'd like. There, thank you.
I got a thumbs up, too.
Thumbs ups works. Thumbs ups works. So, we just, we, we appreciate all of the time-
Go ahead and be seated.
Yeah. Thank you. For all the, all the time and questions. We know that it has been a lot of information and a lot of discussion. And, and so, we appreciate your thoughtful questions and conversations over the last 45 days that we've had this open. And we're happy to answer any more questions that you may have at this time, but we, we ask for your vote to move this TMD forward so we can take care of business.
Thank you.
And also, thank you to County Council and the county staff, who I know have taken on the bulk of, of the back of, end of the work here. We're really appreciative of their work and communication and help on getting everything together to, to get to this point.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this? Come on up.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning.
Good morning.
Gentlemen, first, I think the Board of Supervisors should ask yourself the question-
Couldn't bring the mic over to you a little bit? Thank you.
Build a better mousetrap and the world will beat a path to your door. Now, today, the Amador Lodging Alliance proposes that Amadorians should believe add another tax and the world will beat a path to your door. Now, I'm going to reference a Ledger Dispatch ad that they took out. And recently, as Friday, we have three letters to the editor, which are opinions. I don't know if you read these or not, but I'll be referencing those two papers. Okay, they like to use Sacramento, so we'll use Sacramento as an example. Please be advised, what is being proposed is a proven flawed economic and environmental model. Sacramento is blessed with having downtown commons, DCO. They also have the Golden One Center, yet they're having budget issues to the tune of $40 million, so they raised the parking rates on parking meters throughout the city. It didn't work. I mean, we're using what they're talking about, Sacramento. That would be the first point. Second, we'll use San Diego. The use of San Diego TMD website, stable funding, that would imply a TMD can control an economy. A TMD cannot control an economy. Recent closings here in California, brick-and-mortar stores, those are even in these areas that collected a transient occupancy tax and a TMD. So, I mean, that's, that's just a given fact. Funds are crucial. Guess what? In Sacramento, or in San Diego, their example, it promoted unhousing encampments. All I have to do is ask San Diego, "Do you want that in Amador County?" I certainly don't. Now, let's go with Laura. Would Laura please come up here, please?
Yeah.
Good. Be a team player. Okay, Laura.
Yes.
For your letter, "I'm gifting you $2."
Okay.
Here's your $2. Keep it now. Now, that money-
No bribery here, sir.
Oh, no, it's not bribery. And it has no other connotation. I was in the cheap hotel room. It was this one night. Your letter. I don't like the idea also of this being that, say I come for a three-night stay or I have relatives that come for a three-night stay, they pay it for each night, not just for the first night or for the one stay. It's a cumulative thing. If I stayed a week, I have to pay it every night for the whole week. In other words, it would be $2, $2, $2, or up to $6. It adds up quite quickly. It's why? Because we already know it doesn't work economically.
For the record, what was your name?
John Guthrie. Supervisor Onato. We live right across the canyon.
I thought it was you. We just needed for the record.
Haven't seen you for years, yes. Now, what she mentions also in her letter, of which I brought example, it guarantees only for the marketeers, marketing for the sake of making money. It's just another layer of employment for people to make this funding, to spend it doing what? We don't know. Economically, we can't prove that it's going to be successful. It hasn't been in Sacramento. It hasn't been in San Diego. It isn't successful in Oakland or San Francisco. And those are much bigger cities, have bigger problems, and yet they still try these little, you know, marketing deals that do not work. You can thank, I thank you, and you can sit down now.
Can I respond to something that-
You got $2. You get to respond.
I, I, I think the, the big thing I want to say is we, I don't think any of these cities, including San Diego or Sacramento, or, and not what we're trying to do here in Amador, are to raise enough money to fix systemic problems of homelessness or poverty or lack of other city services. The, this is a very, very narrow assessment on a very narrow set of transactions. So, it's not taxing everything that everyone buys. It's not a sales tax. It's not even as big as a TOT tax, although it's similar in the way that it's administered. It is specifically to fund marketing. So, I just think that it's not a fair comparison to point to issues like homelessness and say that a TMD is not going to solve it because nobody here thinks that it is. It's something to help raise the profile of local residents and local businesses just a little bit to help alleviate some of the midweek slumps, the cut hours in the off-season, things like that. But I don't think anybody here is under the illusion that we're going to fix stable funding for the city. It's to provide stable funding for the Amador Council of Tourism. So, thank you.
You forgot your-
No, I don't. Okay.
If you don't want it, you give it to Hostess or the Food Bank.
Okay. I will give it to the food.
Just for example. To go back on what she stated, on the, the more you increase population, you're going to increase homelessness. The more you make, I mean, it's just economy of scale, but I don't want to go into all the economics. There's also the dual meeting of coyote and mule in San Diego, San Diego, which differ from here, where we have the pure animal sense that a mule is a mule and a coyote is a coyote. For those are aware of what goes on in San Diego County, San Diego, that would all make sense to you. Essentially, they have sex and drug trafficking in San Diego, so the Amador Lodging Alliance wants Amador County to be likened to San Diego. I hope not. Yeah, you can laugh now, but as you bring more people in, you're going to bring in more problems. The reality, the TMDs promote inflation. You're increasing a cost. And if you believe in humankind climate change, the ad, the ad provides 113 more reasons for humankind climate change in California. TMDs are in fact in conflict with the State of California's climate goal. So, of the 113 that they stayed on here, on here they stayed 120, whatever it is, that, like I say, it goes against the whole State of California's climate goal that here you put solar cells out here to try to save the planet, yet you're going to turn around and increase what? Tourism, homelessness, all the different things that go with it. I mean, it's, it's already proved out in the big cities. And they use Sacramento and San Diego, and we know the problems they have. TMDs place greed over climate and the environment. The reality, wild creatures die, run over by tourism or a development. And essentially, a TMD is nothing more than another piece in the electronic spy network for mining data, which is truly what it is. To close, the natural beauty promotes itself. Why you cannot just be Amador County with a TMD? After all, Amador County, or Amador Lodging Alliance misstated the facts in, on this ad and also in their letters. So, I would say you deny having a TMD in Amador County for those reasons. And like I say, economy of scale is what you're looking at here. You're going to bring in more people, you're going to bring in more problems. And this county doesn't have the funds to combat those problems. Sacramento doesn't have the funds to do it. Oakland doesn't have it. San Francisco doesn't. San Diego doesn't.
So, let's, I like to do a little rebuttal myself on a statement you said. The parking fees for Sacramento, that wasn't to advertise Sacramento more, that is to cover their service fees, of bringing services to the Sacramento County. So, it's not the tourism that was doing that. So, it's two sides of that coin fighting each other. I understand that. But Sacramento raising the parking fees are for them to cover their services, you know, police, fire, and everything across the board. So, I understand what you're saying, but the one thing is, the difference is, the main part of it is those ladies are all volunteers. This is all volunteers, you know, providing services to this county. Now, they used to have a paid person, and that was the most part of their fees. Well, now, all their fees that the Board gets, the more that they got from their own people are, are going pure advertisement to help this county. So, that's the part of it that we need to be careful how far we go, teeter-totter, either way. And I get that, and we try to do that. But it's how do we take care of ourselves? And you've got to put your own shoes on before you can walk around. So, thank you.
Anyone else have a, Brian, you have a thing?
I'm good.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Guthrie, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Do you, do you own a bed and breakfast?
No, I do not. I'm Switzerland here, totally neutral.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? And to start off, I will apologize not getting back to the email. My wife had fallen and broken her leg, and I hadn't been able to get back to you guys.
My name is Terri Sweet. I live in Plymouth, and we have a one-room short-term rental attached to our house on eight acres. And just to briefly comment on the ladies who were describing their proposed amendment, they have no authority to regulate short-term rentals, and it would require ordinance amendments from the Board. And a tourism marketing district isn't mentioned in the code. It is a business improvement district.
Well, there's two types. There's a business, and there's a district that's physically of a main street. So, there's two separate items under that same law. I've, I've had to reread it numerous times and had it read to me, so I understand what you're saying.
Good, thank you. And I appreciate the Board's patience, all these months, listening to all this. We believe this plan would violate both the Streets and Highways Code and the California Constitution. The business improvement district law is intended to vitalize commercially zoned areas, not to turn residential neighborhoods into tourist attractions. Homeowners have a right to the quiet enjoyment of their properties and the fundamental right to exclude others. The Office of the Los Angeles City Clerk, in answer to the question, can residential areas have business improvement districts, BIDs, states? Under current law, BIDs are for commercial areas only. The League of California Cities states, "Over the past several decades, BIDs have become increasingly common feature of downtowns and other commercial areas." The City of San Jose states, "BIDs are proven to work by providing services that improve the overall viability of commercial districts." The City of San Diego states, "A BID is a tool available to property and business owners to improve a downtown or other commercial area." Adoption of this proposal as is would be a massive de facto rezoning from residential to commercial. The cumulative effect makes it a project subject to CEQA, requiring an environmental impact report. A traffic impact study is also required according to county standards because the plan is inconsistent with land use and zoning designations. Proponents repeatedly make the false claim that assessments would not be a debt of Amador County residents. By law, assessments, late fees, and interest are a debt of the business owner. Proponents like to say, "A rising tide lifts all boats." If that analogy is accurate, then the assessment is a tax, subject to voter approval, because it is only a general benefit affecting all businesses, not just lodgings, which have to pay the assessment. Proponents stated, "A marketing district would support all business sectors in the county, including shops, restaurants, and historic sites." More evidence that the assessment is a tax. In fact, proponents are calling it the Amador County Tourism Marketing District. The title says nothing whatsoever about lodging. It is designed to benefit all kinds of businesses in the county, not just lodgings. Proponents' representative, Laura Walz, wrote in the Ledger Dispatch, "In essence, the proposed Amador County Tourism Marketing District aims to create a unified and well-funded marketing effort to attract more tourists, thereby strengthening the local economy and supporting businesses that rely on visitor spending." Those comments describe a tax. Further inequities are found in the arbitrary figure of 2% being applied equally to a one-room and a 100-room lodging. In 2010, Prop 26 was approved, providing a new constitutional definition of a tax. For this proposed assessment to avoid being a tax, according to Article 13(c), Section 1, Subsection E. 1 and 2, it has to provide a specific benefit, service, product, or privilege to the payer that is not provided to those not charged, and it cannot exceed the government's cost of providing same. Proponents claim the specific benefit to payors is increased room sales. So, I contacted the planning department, and I asked, "How many more short-term rental units can I have on my property?" I gave my zoning information, solely residential. The answer was none. I have one unit for two people, and that is the maximum allowed on my property. So, according to county planning, it would be impossible for me to derive a specific benefit of increased room sales, thus a tax. May I have the, excuse me, a second. I invite the Board to consider, again, California Streets and Highways Code, Section 36632, in its entirety, which has been routinely misinterpreted by the consultants. A and B are identical except for the payment method. A is a real property-based assessment. B is what they propose, a business-based assessment. C is- C is no assessment at all. A must have a benefit matching the assessment. B must have a benefit matching the assessment. C has no benefit at all, so it shall not be subject to any assessment. C does not refer to a real property-based assessment. It refers to no assessment based on location. A refers to real property-based assessment, not C. Assessment is defined at Section 36606.5. It means a levy for the purpose of providing activities that will provide certain benefits to properties or businesses located within a property and business improvement district. Whether a property-based assessment or a business-based assessment, the location and the specific benefit determine whether or not there can be a levy. Solely residential zoning is exempt. As county planning has shown, the proposal can give no specific benefit to a lodging owner whose ability to increase his room sales is not only impossible, it is illegal. County planning advised me that to expand the number of my short-term rental units of one, it would have to be commercial construction, which my zoning does not allow. That is why Section 36632c says, properties located in solely residential zoning are conclusively presumed to derive no benefit from a business improvement district. I do not have a commercial lodging. I have a personal residence. It's called home sharing. And that is why most cities and counties which have created a tourism marketing district only include lodgings with a threshold number of rooms with an actual capacity to increase room sales. Section 36624 of the Streets and Highways Code authorizes the board today to make changes to the boundaries of the proposed district that will exclude territory that will not benefit from the proposed activities. Section 36625, Subsection A7, requires the resolution to include a finding that the businesses within the area will be specifically benefited by the activities funded by the proposed assessments. The resolution contains no finding that a non-commercial lodging with no possibility of expanded sales would benefit specifically from being assessed. The local government bears the burden of proving by a preponderance of the evidence that the levy is not a tax. There is no evidence I have seen that a levy on my business would not be a tax. Therefore, we ask the board, as the legislature intended, to exclude from the district businesses located on properties that are zoned solely residential. Thank you.
Okay.
You know, I have a question for Mr. Gelot. What she's bringing up, as far as being exempt, isn't that more like property and business improvement district, like streets, streetlights, sidewalks, along that line?
So the classic example, the classic example of such a district would be a sort of an old main street, and they, the business along there would say, we're going to assess these businesses, new streetlights, fancy garbage can. I mean, they're going to make that main street look much nicer than what the general tax revenue county would or city would provide. And, but when, and usually they're property-based, right? And so property-based, it would be commercial, the main street would be commercial, and if there's a residential or an ag property along that main street, then they're exempt. But if you're, when you're assessing businesses, you're assessing like businesses. You're not assessing the properties. So the exception that she refers to in 36632, it says, properties are exempt, properties shall not be subject to the assessment. Her property is not subject to the assessment. If she stops renting, stops operating this business, there will be no assessment.
Excuse me, but that's not what it says.
That is what it says. It says, properties zoned for residential use, or that are zoned for agricultural use
Are conclusively.
Shall not be subject to any assessment.
Because there's no benefit in that location.
It's not a property assessment. Your property is not assessed. Never is there an assessment against your property.
May I comment on
Yes.
Your question, Supervisor Onetto?
Sure, it's up to Chairman, he said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Marketing is considered an activity that can be funded by a property and business improvement district. But what the consultants have done is that they've plucked marketing out of the whole business improvement district law, and they've stretched it out and made it into an entity of its own.
Yeah, I think what County Council said, I believe is correct, and he is a lawyer. I think you're kind of mixing oranges and grapefruits.
I've got to add one more thing to it, is in your own argument, as far as a business in a residential zone, you're trying to, we've had one of the supervisors have tried to pull, you know, Airbnb-type of operations out of residential areas. So you're trying to say that you're not a business, but you are a business in a residential area?
No, I said I'm not a commercial lodging.
But you are. You pay a TOT tax.
Right.
So you are a lodging in a residential, you know, so, you know, you're a very microscopic business. I understand that, but it's, you're still a business in a residential area.
Well, think about this. I have a cottage food permit. Can I make a business improvement district that is a cottage food marketing district?
Probably, but we only have like three or four in the whole county. So, yeah.
So what benefit could I possibly get from this district?
Well, that would be part of, you know, the contract that you'd have to figure out and draw up.
I'm just telling you that it's, we just disagree on the law.
I understand.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I will add, I have, based on the amount of TOT that Ms. Sweet's business submits, and based on the Airbnb price for her, for a night of her lodging, she, that's, according to my calculations, 29 nights a year. So presumably, there are more nights for her to benefit.
But she doesn't want to, but she's also, that's her, that's her business model.
But her choice is not.
We have long-term renters also that stay for four months.
Well, long-term renters would not be subject to the assessment.
Well, I mean, you're saying that I have.
Come back up to the microphone, sorry. Got to make sure everybody hears.
29 nights is less than long-term renting. We do have people who stay longer. We have somebody coming for two months this summer, but we don't usually. I don't know what your point was.
Well, that's a long term.
Your, my point was, according to the numbers, it does look like there is, what you had said was, there is no ability for you to rent out more.
Oh, that's what I thought you meant.
Which doesn't appear to be true based on the numbers.
But you don't know, we have friends come and stay. We just had friends from Nevada stay for three days. We have the long-term renters, so.
I understand that.
And it's up to me how many people stay in my home.
I understand that, but
Up to them.
But that's a business choice, not whether it's possible or not.
Okay, we disagree on the law. Don't make me go to court, please.
Just very briefly, it is our belief that Ms. Sweet's unit is one of the units that would be able to be exempted. I understand her point that she doesn't believe we should be able to make that, but I do think, based on where it's located, she could submit in writing that she wants to be exempted, and that's exactly the kind of situation that we will be happy to take a look at and exempt. So we're not trying to be unreasonable, but we think that, at this point, there's a solution for her readily available.
You know, I have a question for you, Ms. Walz. You know, it looks like you have, what, 284 businesses supposedly, and 100 and some odd pay TOT tax, but out of that 284 businesses, 27 of them are 74% of the
Mm-hmm.
Stays.
Yes.
Have you looked at, do you want maybe like an association and a self-assessment?
We've talked about this, I think, at both of the last meetings. There are multiple issues with that, including, we currently, the City of Sutter Creek, the City of Plymouth, both collect voluntary assessments, and the number of people that participate is very, very low. When it's voluntary, people can stop contributing at any point in time. Part of what we're trying to do is actually raise stable funding. There's no, and then there's also the issue that it's possible that some of those people who are in favor of the assessment in theory, if they feel like not everyone is paying it and playing on an even field, they're not going to want to pay it either. We have no way of guaranteeing funding if we do a voluntary assessment.
Because I could see where a person with a single room, they rent out, or a single ADU
Mm-hmm.
Would probably not benefit as much as somebody that has a sign that's neon alongside a road. We're going to catch those people passing by a lot more readily, because, maybe I asked Greg, it's like, can a homeowner have a lit neon sign that says vacancy or advertise their business?
Well, I've got to ask, I have a statement here, is, I've been military, I can't afford to go a whole bunch of hotels in my life. So I have done numerous Airbnbs from Australia to wherever, and I was, we looked, we were advertised, advertised to what this area will bring, and so I went up the cheap way, and hey, we're, there's a, I can stay there, I can stay in their homes. Lake Tahoe, I've stayed in, you know, the lady moved out for us to move in. It was kind of, that was weird, but that was, that was her house, and you know, it wasn't just a straight ADU, but, and so there is options, and it is a, definitely a more economical way of visiting an area.
Yeah, but I was talking about signage, so a lot of the bigger hoteliers and stuff, they have signs that advertise, hey, we're here, so people passing through will utilize their business.
I would argue that there's not a lot of people passing through, and that's, that's
Those are motels.
Yeah, but I'm saying in general, like, I don't think this is a county where you get a lot of what we call walk-in business, last-minute stays of people just passing through. There are some, but you need to get the people here first, and that's actually what this funding is to try to do.
I understand that.
Right, and then to kind of go off of what Chairman Brown said, you know, I had a gentleman who has an Airbnb in River Pines, and he's like, how are you going to bring people to River Pines? And I said, when we're able to thoughtfully market different, just like what Chairman Brown said, you know, it's not about having a neon sign in your front yard, it's having people be aware that there's this amazing location that's affordable, that's accessible to all kinds of things, and, you know, they can go hiking, fishing, and that's exactly what he wants to target with his short-term rentals. So it's very beneficial, it's not just for the hotels that you see on the, on the main streets.
I would think they'd probably benefit more.
So I will say this, I think, and I know we've brought this up previously, there are tourism marketing districts that have chosen to, chosen to exclude short-term vacation rentals. But Amador has a lot of very, very, very small bed and breakfasts that are barely larger than some of the short-term vacation rentals, that have to undergo regular fire inspections, that pay workers' comp for their employees, that have, that have to pay commercial rates on their fire insurance, which is a totally different, and I know people, not necessarily in this county, but I'm sure it's happened, that have not been able to get their bed and breakfast re-insured as a commercial property, because they have to have it insured as a commercial property, where if it's a short-term vacation rental, they can just get residential insurance. So there are other burdens that a lot of these bed and breakfasts go through, and I think our thinking was, a lot of these short-term vacation rentals are not that, are similar in size, and they're going to benefit in a similar manner to more people knowing to come to Amador for, for their trip.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would suggest that people probably have a place to stay before they get here. That's what I normally do. Once in a great while, we'll just take off and go look for something, which is.
Anybody else want to speak on this?
Yeah.
Good morning, Supervisors and Staff. My name is Will Pritchard. I'm the, my wife Jennifer and I are the owners and operator of Amador Brewing Company. We're hitting 10 years this year, so we have seen in our 10 years, a lot about tourism in the county, and that tourism doesn't happen by itself. The pool of folks visiting the county, it needs to be refreshed. And tourism is obviously an extremely important part of the economics of our county, all the way around, and as far as how it benefits the local citizens, it's through choices. We have a lot of businesses here that can exist and do well because of the tourism that adds to the local business. And, you know, our business is one that if it weren't for the tourism, we wouldn't have done it. I think in Plymouth, we're probably two to one tourists versus local traffic. In Pine Grove, it's more like three to one locals versus tourism. So we see both sides of that mix, you know, as far as our offering to the county. Obviously, not every restaurant, not every lodging, not every short-term vacation rental is going to make it. You have to compete as a business. You know, you have to go out and get your customers. You know, the number one rule of business is, who's your customer? And if you can't answer that question, you're not going anywhere. The goal of the TMD is, you know, I'm all for it, because it's, it's important to keep, you know, marketing in a competitive environment with other regions to get people to come to Amador. We're very good on repeat traffic. It's a very attractive county. But, you know, people will come for a few years, and then maybe move on, they'll pass away, they'll move away. So it's important to keep, you know, recharging the tourism pool, and I think it's to the benefit of everybody that lives here. I don't think we're talking about trying to achieve explosive growth in tourism. We're talking about maintaining what we have, not losing choices, not having things fall apart. So as it relates to lodging, more consistent occupancy, better rates, those things help everybody, including the Airbnb folks. You get to rent your unit probably more for maybe a better rate. Is that not a good thing? So I'm just here to speak on behalf of what everybody is doing on the TMD, and I ask for your vote, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, call for the vote.
Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crewe? Vice Chairman Crewe?
Says thumbs up.
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Okay, we're back to the board for discussion.
So Supervisors, at this stage, so the initial, to start this whole process, you needed the petition of support, and you had petitions from businesses that supported this district, the creation of this district, from businesses that would pay just about 75% of the total assessment, and that's not accounting 49er Village, which we carved out, because we could not separate how much, how much of their TOT was for their cabins versus their R. versus their RV spaces, which Plymouth does charge for. And so presumably, if you add that cabin revenue in there, that percentage would be higher than 74%. At this stage of the process, it becomes more like a garbage rate increase process, where it's a majority protest, and if there's a majority of protests or businesses that would pay 50% or more of the assessment, and they say they do not want this tourism district, then the board cannot take any action, and cannot take any action for at least a year. Based on my calculations so far, there's less than 1% of opposition, either formal or just people who've, who I can tell own businesses, who've spoken against the TMD, less than 1%. So, it's sort of in the board's hands to establish the district or not, and so if you, if you want to establish the district, you would, you would adopt the resolution that's in your packet. If you want to include the proposed exception that was presented from the proponents, presumably you will amend your plan, the district plan to include that, and so you would just acknowledge that the plan that you approved includes the exception that was referenced here today.
You know, I have a question on that exception, if I could ask them. One-room short-term rental would be exempt, would that be like also, that was like owner-occupied home, would you make that same exception if it's a one-room ADU?
As long as it's on the primary residence of the, it's on the owner's primary residence.
Come back, hey, says, got to come back up to the...
The exception that we carved out was included in ADU or a converted garage if it was on the owner's primary residence?
Yes.
And did not have a full kitchen?
Yeah.
So, yes, that would include...
I guess I'll rephrase my question. I was looking at a one-term AD, a one-room ADU that has a kitchen, on the owner's primary property residence.
Our thinking on that was that the majority of the feedback that we had gotten from people who were renting these ADUs for short-term use instead of long-term use was because they were not suitable for long-term habitation, and that usually is because there's a lack of a kitchen. I mean, that was, that was how we sort of came up with that, more in that we were taking influence from the way a lot of short-term rental ordinances are drafted, which makes a distinction there, because then you're not also taking housing off of the market if it's not going to be otherwise used.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Cornell?
A lot of notes. Tracy's spirit, I'll try to keep it short. I think the reason this is so contentious is because you're asking us to force people to do something against their will, and I think the main reason people like living in California, I mean, in, whoa, sorry, in Amador County, is because they feel free. There's estimates that there are 1,000 short-term rentals, and we have TOT being paid by 100 and something of them, almost 200. So, I'm guessing that HDL is not going to have an easy time policing this either. I don't know what I'm saying, it just seems like it's sort of voluntary anyway, just as TOT seems somewhat voluntary. So, I think what we're trying to advertise is, the whole state is trying to figure out, because they were the hobbies of the upper-middle class, like skiing and golfing and traveling and tourism and all of that, and so it seems to be struggling statewide, and this is a theory to address it. Those are just some of my thoughts.
Okay, Supervisor Epperson?
Yeah, I mean, it's got overwhelming support, and I think as far as the enforcement goes, I mean, I know we struggled this at Iona, we had a hotel that I think they're probably still fighting with, it just never seemed to end. People that want to support it will, if you want to get out of it, you can, it's pretty obvious, you know, we're not going to come knocking on your door, I don't think, but, you know, it's, yeah, there's enough support to, I believe, pass it today.
Supervisor Onetto?
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable if it excluded one-room ADUs with a kitchen, but, because I also have the same thought as Supervisor Cornell on people, one reason they come to Amador County is a little more freedom here, and I understand what you're looking at, but if you exclude them, I think it wouldn't be that big of a chunk of the pie, and yeah, you're saying they're going to maybe see a benefit from your efforts, possibly, but possibly they don't want to be involved in it too. So, it's, I get both sides a little bit, that's kind of what I see.
Supervisor Crew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was leaning towards not, I was with Supervisor Cornell and Onetto, but with the carve-out, I think they did a well-thought-out to help the little guys, which tend to get overlooked in a lot of things that happen in government. So, with that, I am definitely for the getting, moving forward with this, and I'd make a motion if you're ready.
I'll take your motion. For myself, like I said, is that for me, I've visited numerous places across the world, and it is definitely the advertising that has gotten me there, you know, what is, what has brought me to go see Cairns, Australia, Sydney, Australia, Hawaii, all these different, you know, places, and I can tell you, other than the military, I've been stayed in not very many hotels on my own. Not saying anything about our hotels in Amador County, but one of the things that I've also, last Friday, Supervisor Epperson and I both went to Roaring Camp, and I've lived here 20 years, have visited another 20 years, never been to Roaring Camp, had no clue about Roaring Camp, had a wonderful dinner, but who brought me there? Well, the Chamber of Commerce brought me there. They said, you're coming. Oh, okay. And so, but we had a wonderful time, talking with people, talking with other businesses of Amador County. So, how did that get there? Well, it was by advertising. And so for me, I'm definitely for this, because I want to make sure that we're careful, you know, the tourism district is very, I was, personally, I was upset with the tourism district for a while, when we killed our own daffodil hills, you know, that was, we over-advertised. Well, they learned their lesson, and now we're trying to figure out things to do on the weekdays and that type of stuff. So, I am for it also, so we have a motion by Supervisor Crew, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Just to be clear, Supervisor Crew, your motion includes the amended plan as discussed today.
Adoption of resolution with amendments.
Yes, with the amendment, for sure.
Okay, we have a first thing, second, call for the vote.
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
No.
And so that is, resolution has been passed.
I would have voted for exempted small operations, but it's okay.
So, we have another public hearing at 10:30, so we're going to take a five-minute
Surveying Department requests to hold the public hearing for a certain type of merger as requested by Roscoe Raymond and Linell Lewis Raymond. The property involved in said mergers of lots seventeen and eighteen.
Hello, these customers are trying to meet county guidance so that they can complete a structure that they're building on their lots. These lots are from the River Pines subdivision number one. I did include maps from the subdivision and the assessors program so that you can see what lots they are.
Any questions from the board? Supervisor Crew, any questions?
None for me.
Okay, anything from the public? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
And who was the second I... Sorry, okay. Call for the vote?
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson. And Supervisor Ronetto.
Aye.
Okay, back to the board for discussion.
I'll say this, I wish there was more mergers like this in River Pines, the lots are bigger. A little back there. So yeah, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the merger and the resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Ronetto.
Aye.
Okay, pass five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're on to six B, Jackson Valley Fire Protection District, discussion apostle action relative to a public hearing to consider the following matters. One, adoption of a fire impact fee nexus study for Jackson Valley Fire Protection District service area. And two, adoption resolution to impose that fire protection impact fees in accordance with the approval, approved fire impact fee nexus study.
Good morning.
Morning.
Name's Randy Makeupson, the fire chief for Jackson Valley Fire. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors and the staff for considering the impact fee study. The fee program was developed by an experienced impact fee consultant with twenty-three years in the field. The impact fee is determined by this nexus study is consistent with the county's general plan. The study is legally defensible, well documented, and the fees are very reasonable compared to those adopted by similar fire districts. Our impact fees have not changed since nineteen ninety-five, it's been thirty years since we've made any adjustment to it. I believe I've got, that's all I've got this time unless you guys got some questions.
What was, what is the average fee for everybody? Cause I know it ranges from who's ever closest to your station to...
No, it goes by square footage.
Right.
It's a, for just your regular, uh, single family housing, it's ninety-five cents a square foot.
Okay.
For your multi-housing, it's a dollar twenty-six a square foot. Commercial is ninety-six cents a square foot.
That ninety-five cents a square foot for a single family housing, is that on top of the, um, five, is that on top of the five hundred dollars fee?
No, the five hundred was our impact fee.
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety-five, we're wanting to adjust it to this, that will eliminate that five hundred dollar fee.
Okay.
It'll just be this here. And agricultural is a fifty-eight cents a square foot, warehousing will be sixty-three cents a square foot.
It seemed like, actually seemed like agriculture and warehousing seemed a little bit high, I think, demand compared to a house, but, um...
So, my calculations, your fees are...
Well, it's like half, or maybe a little more than half. But I think, I don't think ag would have that, that big impact in like warehousing and distribution as compared to a house, but it's probably not that far out of whack, but it's a little higher than I would have thought it would be.
A little bit of a, I also, you know, as calculating for a two thousand square foot home, at ninety cents, that gets up there.
Yeah, it is, I think it's pretty similar with amateur fire protections, they're pretty close, it might be a couple hundred dollars more, but...
Mine's ninety.
Ours is done later, pardon?
Mine's ninety dollars.
That's your, that's your, uh...
Assessment fee, yeah.
Assessment fee, this is the impact fee for new homes.
Oh, oh, okay, never mind, never mind.
We'll still have our thirty dollars assessment fee.
Okay.
For a lot, no, this is for a new construction only.
There you go, that's what I was running to get.
That's where I'm, that's where I was going sideways, I was reading all this and I'm like, I'd, okay.
And I could see why you need to raise them, cause hey, it's been way, it's been thirty years I thought I saw somewhere in there, nineteen ninety-five.
Yeah, nineteen ninety-five, thirty years is when we implemented.
That's a long time.
We've been doing so many other assessment fees that that's where my mind was, so I have to apologize.
Yeah, this is the impact fees.
Impact fees, yeah, this says right there on top, okay, never mind. Shows you how you overlook just one silly little word.
I do it all the time myself.
And you probably, it's probably nothing you could change, you probably need the nexus as is, but I would, I would have thought you'd see like, you know, your, um, I kind of surprised industrial so high, is that because you have more maybe injuries or...
I, truthfully, I'm not for sure on what the, what the difference between the industrial and the, uh, office space. Office, I think it's more of a fire hazard, the offices.
Yeah.
Space than the industrial would be.
Okay. No, I don't, I think it's fine.
Okay, anybody from the public want to question this? Okay, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second. I think I beat you, second.
I think Supervisor Neto, my left ear said...
Got to be quick.
Said first.
Further away.
Okay, call for the vote?
Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Anetto.
Aye.
Okay, that's five zero, back to the board for discussion.
Yeah, I think it's pretty obvious it needs to be done, it's pretty straightforward, I think, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution and adopt the fire impact fees.
You know, second pet.
Before we vote, Supervisor Crew, did you need to say anything?
No.
Okay.
I'm all good with it.
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Anetto.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now we go back to our regular agenda. Five A, discussion apostle action relative to proposal to send a letter on behalf of ARSA to the Regional Water Control, Quality Control Board requesting that they allow the continued disposal of ARSA water on the Castle Oaks Golf Course.
This is, uh, denied my request to put on, um, it's, uh, so I'm not going to speak from my past experience on the city council, there, the tele twenty-two report, I mean, it'd been sitting there for twenty-two years, I think it is, or twenty-three, whatever the count is. When I was on the council, I actually went down to regional and asked somebody what he wants to do, we, we've been working through a list, we spent a ton of money doing it, improving the wastewater treatment plant, among other things. And for some reason last year, this thing became this giant deal, and they're actually working on getting their new, uh, contract with the ARSA and everybody else trying to get their wastewater discharge reports done. That being said, um, and I don't, not ascribing blame to anybody necessarily, but it's like, I'm not sure why the regional water quality control board is so hot on this thing now. So now it's kind of like a demand thing where they've, uh, they just submitted a report, I think it was last Tuesday, they submitted a report, but it sounds to me like they're just going to drag it out as long as they can, they say they're, they're not going to rush it, they're not going to push it. But the problem is they're punishing not the city, the city, I mean, they're really kind of saving money because they're not having to operate the plant, but what they're doing is though, they're punishing the golf course, they're trying to sell it right now, and it's burning up. And the bigger issue for, on our, on our realm, I'm on the ARSA board, I think Supervisor Cornell as well, is that water is backing up in the system and they're getting very close to when they're going to not, they gotta put water somewhere. And they're, they're reaching that point, and the system, the way it functions, they can, I think they're allowed to put water on Bauer's property, at least for this year, but the issue is that system, it's a throughput system, you have to have water, it has to go all the way down through the bottom. And once Preston reaches zero freeboard capacity, then the water backs, but it has to go somewhere, and the problem is, is all the other, all these unintended impacts. I broached the topic with the city manager down there in Ione, and I said, what if you just violate the law, and they, he said, he brought that up too, and they said, don't. I mean, in theory, it was going to be a five thousand dollar fine, it would just be open the valve and irrigate for three days, pay the fine for three days and continue as much as, dump as much water as fast as they could. That apparently is not an option, um, and all they get is a don't, but the bigger issue is this, that it is creating a huge problem because now, um, dam safety, which they had been trying to get that dam at Henderson repaired for years. They finally got a contractor onboard or trying to move forward, but the issue is again, they have to empty the dam before it can fix, that's kind of a thing. So we're, I'm just requesting that we send a letter to regional just asking them, begging them for some relief, to be able to allow ARSA, uh, and that part of the operation to be able to get the dam fixed. And to be able to dispose of water, which the golf course is the place of that, they actually upgraded the plant too, they changed some filters and stuff too.
Why, why'd they originally tell them to stop using ARSA water?
Uh, tele twenty-two, there's a report that was filed like twenty-some years ago, and it was never approved, and it's, it, they just sat there on their desk, and all of a sudden now they're like, you can't dispose anymore, I don't, I don't, there must be something going on internally. It's typically what it is, it's usually changeover down there, they get some new staff members going through reviewing cases, and they're like, why wasn't this done, and it's like, I don't know, I mean, you guys have had it in your desk for twenty years, you tell me.
Has there been any communication sent from Ione to the Regional Water Quality Control Board complaining about that water?
Um, I'm not, I mean, I'm, other than the report, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's not like the end of the world, I mean, the water is actually there, that they produce would be better quality because they upgraded the plant. They're just wanting this report to be done and approved by, by regional, and they meet like once a month, so the process is slow to begin with, any little hiccup, um, their, their, ARSA is reaching the point to where if they don't, I honestly, I don't know what they're going to do, I mean, because they're stuck.
They've used that water for years, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah, it's been going on for forty, fifty years, I think, something like that, it's been a very long-term project, um, and to my knowledge, nobody's died because of it, um, or whatever, but it's like right now, we're at this point to where, you know, they're, they're narrowing that window to be able to repair that dam is closing rapidly because of weather. You know, obviously when it starts raining, they're done, so, and I don't know if this letter will push the argument any farther, but it's, I think it's the, the, you know, we're kind of getting close to out of options, I contacted the assemblyman, contacted our senator, trying to get some political pressure. And yet it just kind of hang, lingers and hangs, and hopefully the regional board would just, could at least give them a little, give a little bit of, uh, relief, if not for Ione itself, if for the, uh, other people it's directly affecting and impacting.
Enough, seems logical.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman. Questions for Supervisor Epperson?
Sure.
Did Ione request us to write a letter or know we're even writing a letter or considering it?
Yes, they did, I, uh, I met with, uh, both city managers, uh, Tom DeBois is down in Sutter Creek and the Ione city manager, George Lee. And I offered to write a letter if they thought it would be beneficial, and they said yes, I actually, I CC'd them on the communication between the county and, uh, the entities involved. I do believe that ARSA has sent some verbiage that they would like us to use.
Because we would write the letter as a member of ARSA is our reason for concern?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Anetto.
I'm good. Sounds like a good idea.
Anybody from the public? Okay, call for a motion?
Well, I requested, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
And you're going to write the letter, right?
Uh, I believe we have sufficient, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, call for the vote?
Thank you Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew.
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell.
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson.
Aye.
Supervisor Anetto.
Aye.
And thank you for your support. Passes five zero.
Appreciate that.
Okay, we're on to five B, behavioral health, letter of support for Victory Village for the Home Key Plus application.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, I am back, um, and I've invited Jason Mulford from the city of Jackson and Nicole Mulford from Victory Village, because I know the board did have some questions about the letter of support that they were requesting for Home Key Plus. I did draft a letter, and I know, um, we were also waiting to see if the city was going to approve that, and it's my understanding it's going to the city tonight.
Correct.
So, this won't affect Danco at all?
No, no, it's completely separate.
I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure we're two different, uh, systems.
Completely separate, yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, city council has approved the MOU and the resolution as it currently written, it is on the agenda for this evening. At six thirty, we're the last one on the item, um, so we're expecting to be approved, the vice mayor, mayor are very excited about this project. The vice mayor's worked with us for the last three years, um, since start till now, um, we've targeted veteran population, and this is a acquisition rehabilitation, non-GAAP financing, so they're totally different. Different pools, different sections, different due dates, different everything. So, the application is complete, it's ready to submit upon approval of a letter and some document signages by the city council. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, um, I have a couple, is this like, what, twenty units?
Yes, sir, we're going to take it from fifteen to twenty, so we'll have five additional units. By going from an SRO, single room occupancy with congregant living, we're going to have contained units, everyone will have their own apartments basically, there'll be a patio, there'll be an internal entrance, the elevator will be turned back on. You'll have four studios, twelve one-bedroom apartments, two two-bedrooms and one three-bedroom apartment with an onsite daycare with a large license for in-home daycare. And they'll have a barbecue area, a playground area, onsite laundry, there'll be a recreation room on the third floor with exercise equipment and additional laundry up there.
So fi, so five units are reserved for veterans exclusively?
So we're doing a fifty percent exclusive for veteran, fifty percent for homeless or at-risk individuals, all with behavioral issues. And, um, there's caveats to that, if you don't have individuals that can fit in, you can backfill basically.
Fifty percent or twenty-five percent?
Fifty, it's fifty-fifty.
Um, your, letter says twenty-five percent.
I took, I took that from something that you had sent from before, so, um...
I should say yes.
Whereas the, um, the description of the, the project, this was from something that I, that you had sent me before.
Seventy-five percent veteran occupancy?
Oh, I see, yeah.
That's targeted.
That's targeted, yes, targeted.
What do we estimate the population of veterans that are needing these services are in the county?
So we do, uh, have thirty-nine homeless individuals at that centers in the last three years, forty percent of them are veterans. Additionally, we have the other veteran center, which is transitional housing, um, that is a twenty-bed facility that the board of supervisors approved for the last ten years, we do about, what is it, twenty-five over there?
Yeah, twenty-five to thirty veterans, not including family members.
Yes, we would have more veterans living there except for as an SRO doesn't qualify for HUD-BASH, which is the subsidy directly as a tentative voucher for the veterans, they have all their rent's pay a portion dependent on their income. So by approving this type of thing, they can use HUD-BASH vouchers, which will leave rent burdens on these veterans who can't afford housing, and able to get them in there and get services coordinated with the VA and if qualified with behavioral health.
Is there any county residence requirements, because that's the big, the big thing, you, you know, building, they will come, people's worried that they're going to bring in, I mean, I, I share that concern because, I mean, we've talked about the other project with Danco, it's like, I really want to make sure that we're servicing our community and not enabling people to come and, you know, help themselves.
Well, we, I agree, um, historically, we haven't had a lot of outside agencies referring to us for transferring from other counties in. However, under the Fair Housing Act, we can't rule out anybody, it's illegal for us to bar people from the county of origin.
Is there a way to give like preference though, people that have ties, actual ties, like besides the prison or something?
No, it's illegal to do so, we would be violating the Fair Housing Act because we'd be adding...
You can do that, I was kidding.
I know, right? No, but I get your concern, guys, and our purpose is to house our homeless here, because we have a big problem in the city of Jackson, we're aware of it, the city's aware of it, the mayor and vice mayor really want to help and solve these things. We're looking at some other options for future things for the homeless population with several other properties that we own and operate. But yeah, we don't want to bring anyone else here just because we have services here, but we also can't refuse it.
Yeah, I, I just seen, I was at the, some, you know, county supervisor training thing, legislative stuff, and it's like, I mean, we built this gigantic carrot with almost no stick, and I'm trying to, my concern is that we just, we offer so much, but we do, and we, how do you encourage people appropriately to get help? And that, that's kind of that, I mean, it's, it's our problem, you know, they, I was reading the, uh, ten-year plan to get rid of homelessness, I'm like, well, I don't know about that, but, uh, I appreciate it, I understand, but it's like, I say, we're, we are all experiencing homelessness, every last one of us, if you live around, walk around, you're experiencing it, not just the people that are there, but it's the whole community wide, so...
Right, so the coordinate entry system for the COC, for our COC, it's four counties for this project, we try to keep people in their county of origin because that's where their supports are.
Correct, yes, that's my...
So we, transfiling them into a foreign area isn't usually conducive to the environment of that person to become healthy and reintegrate back in. So we don't like, we try to find sources with them within that COC at that level, where all the counties there, behavioral health's there, HHS is there for all four counties.
So, um, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe Ms. Cranfield, uh, and if you don't have the number, maybe they might, how many homeless veterans do we have currently in Amador County approximately, any idea?
Well, the pit count is incredibly wrong, just to say that, um, I would say probably forty, if I were to guess. Because currently we have ten in our programming at the transitional housing, there are probably five in the shelter, and then we also have street homeless veterans as well.
How many that are not in a, in a, your housing unit or a program, and yet, that's my question.
Probably fifty percent of that.
So, fifteen, twenty?
Yeah.
And do you have any numbers, Melissa?
No, um, and like she said, that, not sure how accurate the pit count is, um, and then we don't, um, have any current numbers of, you know, what are the, we'd have to look in R of like, who we're serving that's homeless and identifies as a veteran, and I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, I can get those to you. But for us, it's, it's not a huge number, because I think a lot of veterans are getting services through the VA.
Um, but for us, it's, it's not a huge number, because I think a lot of veterans are getting services through the VA, rather than through Behavioral Health.
Okay.
That's true.
Because, yeah, I mean, oh, so getting back, that's what, or fifty percent of the house, the, the units being set aside for veterans, or is it twenty-five?
It's seventy-five. In our application.
I mean, you're set aside.
Yeah. That's the target, but more realistically, it's gonna be between fifty and seventy-five percent.
So, the Home Key Plus, uh, program allows you to flex those to a certain point. And so, we want to reserve probably, what, five, six?
All new units will be reserved for veterans.
Uh, absolutely, but if we do not have a veteran to place into that unit, we can place somebody else into that unit, as long as we try our best to put a veteran into that unit once it becomes vacant.
Fair enough. My, my concern is, hey, um, I like veterans, I mean, hey, they did their duty, I think we, we have a duty to them. Um, but also, I don't wanna be importing a whole bunch of homeless people in Amador County, whatever status they are.
So, one thing I wanted to add, because I know that you asked about this Supervisor Epperson, was that the Home Key Plus program requires you to use the local CES system, which is the coordinated entry system that identifies and quantifies all of the homeless people that are currently in Amador County and Calaveras, Tooney, Mariposa County, but Amador County, um...
So, could we draw from that, that Calaveras-Tooney pool, then?
Not necessarily. So, we actually have a Veterans By Name list that is specific to Amador County that we all work off of. And so, the CES system brings the, lets us know who's homeless in the area, and it does separate them by county. And then, we have a county-specific veteran by name list that we all work off of, and we are required to use those to feed into this housing project.
So, if I get, get in my car and drive to Amador County, and I'm now, would that make me like, today, would I now today be a ho- Amador County homeless veteran?
So, historically, we have not seen that that has happened. Typically, the veterans that we see are already in this county or from this county and have family in this county.
The answer is yes, though.
You could.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Actually, does it have a homeless problem, I get that.
I just, I wanna negotiate, if we, let's say, we were gonna write this letter. We're a small rural community with limited resources. I would just like to see from this point forward that there's a good faith relationship between the county and whatever it is that you're planning. I've heard the Jackson City Council meeting where our Behavioral Health was spoken of disparagingly, and I've read, I've read several emails where the same took place. And I just know what those people in that building go through to offer the services that they offer. And like even the dissemination of the last letter, I don't know how many people it went to, but I would just like to see that, um, the relationship be repaired, and the people sacrificing down in the HHS building, um, are spoken of honestly and respectfully. I'll put it that way. I know that they have given out their personal cell phone number to many people that are involved in your work, and so they're available twenty-four hours a day, and that's just my request.
I, I thank you for that. Um, as a former social worker, uh, three with Calaveras County, I totally understand the, the pains they go through and how the public doesn't give them the appreciation they need. It's a very hard job, with a lot of burdens on them.
I don't think he's necessarily talking about the public necessarily.
Yes. So, I, I, I will make a, an effort, and I promised that I'll work closely with Melissa in any requests she has that, uh, respond. And anything else that Supervisor Cornell has, you can send to me, and I will follow up with it.
Supervisor Crew?
I would just like to echo that anything we can do to help veterans, we need to do. We owe them a lot, so if we get a few from out of county to fill the quota, so be it. But I don't want it to turn into another homeless haven, as been brought up before, for, uh, we got enough of our own generated without bringing some in.
I think that was very, very well said.
Turn it here on the street.
Agreed.
All right.
So, are we saying the, the letter of support that you had need to be modified a little bit, then? Or?
It looks accurate, um, I was just confused for a second on the numbers.
Okay. Just, I just don't wanna sign anything that I've...
The, the application does reflect fifteen veterans set aside, five non-veteran.
Yes.
And then, um, initially, we'll have about fifty to sixty percent veterans once completion and occupation certification is completed by HCD. And then, from that point, any new residents to come in will be filled with veterans first.
Yes.
Now, just wild ass, you're full up, and you have a veteran come in and say, knock on your door, so what happens then?
We have a referral and waitlist. We also have other resources, too, like SSVIF, who can place them in the community and other homes. Um, we have the GPD Housing Program, which is the Veterans Center in Jackson. Actually, it's in the county, but it's the City of Jackson's, uh, address. That, uh, location can have up to twenty veterans. So, we can always put them there, and as they receive their services, they can transition into the permanent supportive housing on Plaster Drive.
Okay. Okay, back to the Board, call for a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to, we approve the letter with any modifications, Behavioral Health, if necessary.
Okay, second?
A second.
Call for the vote?
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approved. Okay, we on to library presentation regarding Amador County Library Goals and Vision.
Almost thought I wasn't gonna make it to the podium. All right. Okay, yes, so I am Alyssa Ramirez. I have been your county librarian now for almost ten months. Uh, yeah. Uh, using that time to, you know, assess our current library, what we're doing well, um, what we could improve upon. Uh, but before I really get into that, I just did want to mention, because not all of you were, uh, in office when I was hired, uh, that I am coming with ten years of experience as library director in Lincoln County, Montana. So, a lot of what I have, um, you know, or is, what I am bringing before you is based off of that experience and the successes, um, and, you know, what worked well, uh, over there. And so, excuse me, uh, my general assessment is that I am seeing a lot of the issues that I first saw when I became library director in Montana. And it's largely because the library has a real or perceived, uh, image as old-fashioned, and that doesn't always resonate very well, uh, with some people in the community. And so, my goal is to find ways to break through that image and remove those barriers to service, uh, to encourage community engage, engagement, so that way, we are seeing more people utilizing library services.
What do you mean by old-fashioned?
You. Hey.
Uh, old-fashioned, I think, you know, I'm talking about the very traditional librarian stereotype, that I should be sitting in the library at the desk, you know, you speak higher than this, and I'm shushing you. Um, I think that can be very intimidating for a lot of people. Uh, and so, looking for ways to make it more welcoming. Um, I think that there is a difference between old-fashioned and tradition. And so, we can look for ways to honor tradition, uh, without being sort of stuck in the past.
Yeah, I think it's probably a little bit of happy medium. I mean, I don't, um, perceive the library as being a zoo.
You know, absolutely.
A very welcoming zoo, that's not what we're looking for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, might be entertaining, but, um, yeah, because I spent a lot of time in the library as a kid. I mean, that's, for lack of a better term, that was kind of my parents' babysitter, sitter, um, and I learned that encyclopedias are fun to read.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that's, I can understand, I, I see where you're coming from, I just have a, a little bit of misgiving or just a concern.
Yeah, and well, we have, we got time to discuss all of that.
As far as also, um, maybe you get, I guess that's the next item, I never run this, you had two items here, so.
Um, yeah, I mean, my goal is not to completely flip the script on the library. I think that there are ways that we can keep, you know, the charm of a small rural library, uh, but while still being appealing to a modern audience. And, uh, and this is, you know, what I did in Montana, and, you know, I, it was very well-received there. And so, you know, and I think it starts off with, you know, maybe a little bit of an understanding that the purpose of the library has shifted. Just because with internet and cell phones, you know, you have so much information at your fingertips that the need for the library to be, you know, an academic setting, um, it's just, it's, that's less prevalent, that's less, less of a need that we're seeing. And so, what many libraries have done is to shift to encompass both, um, access to information, but community building. And I feel that that's very key, because that, that community building brings buy-in from the community. You know, it increases that love for library, um, where they want to continue to support it. And so, on a very high level, you know, my vision includes, you know, access to information, that we're reducing the barriers so that people have the tools they need, uh, to lead healthy and productive lives, that we're supporting literacy and lifelong learning, because today's world is increasingly complex and requires proficiency in multiple subjects and skills. I mean, it's really hard to do anything now without at least an email. And we know we have many residents that, you know, are really struggling with that digital divide.
Well, that's real true, yeah.
Um, you know, and, but then moving into sort of this, uh, into the community engagement, community building, but that we're offering welcoming spaces, fun opportunities for people to gather, uh, engage and connect, in particular with no strings attached, because a lot of things where, you know, you can, uh, socialize, build community, there is often a price tag to them. Um, and also, you know, kind of going back to, you know, spending your youth in the, in the library, you know, fostering that sense of wonder and possibility and exploration of new ideas, uh, while remaining true to the culture and values of the community. And I think that's especially important for younger generations, because school has become increasingly geared towards testing, right? Like, you have to meet those standards, and there's just, I think, less of that opportunity to just naturally explore a subject without feeling like you need to, you know, meet certain criteria, if you will.
That's kind of like me reading an encyclopedia.
Yeah, just for fun, right? You're doing it for fun and without, you know, the end goal being a grade, right? And so...
It was fun.
Yeah. Um, and so, you know, again, very high level, but what are some sort of actionable steps that we can take, uh, to sort of, to, to achieve those goals? And my first one is centered around like goal-setting and branding, and that is, you know, we're looking to, to develop, um, sorry, I should have brought water. I'm... Oh, actually, thank you so much. Struggling here. So, in, the importance of developing emission values and goals for the library is that it really sets a clear direction, um, so that way, we are prioritizing our funding, prioritizing our staff time in very meaningful ways. Um, I think, you know, there's many directions that libraries can go, uh, different, you know, areas that they can focus on, but, you know, we have finite resources, right? There's only so much money, there's only so much staff time, and so, having goals in place just really allows us to, um, to hit various targets. Um, but I also think it, you know, it outlines an organizational culture and sets the expectations. Um, and in particular with staff development, team building, um, it helps focus all of the staff um, in a, in that particular direction. And I mentioned branding, because I think branding is a very powerful visual way to convey, uh, the culture and priorities of the library, and I shared my example of the black and white logo that we had when I first became library director in Montana, and then the library dir, the, um, logo that I developed once I became library director. And I think they give off two very different feels, you know, something that's a little bit more traditional versus something that's just a little bit more fun and appealing and engaging. And, uh, and to be clear, this did not cost extra money. This is something that I developed with a local businessperson in town. Um, did not do this by hiring some, a, a big consultant that costs, cost a lot of money. Um, these are all things that I did on a very shoestring budget. Uh, the second thing is, you know, working on the atmosphere and environment. And this has been a current area of focus, you know, again, that, uh, while libraries are traditionally quiet, it can be one of the greatest barriers to visiting the library, because it creates very rigid and to some, almost unattainable, uh, expectations, in particular with children. And it, and it is a fine line, we don't want a zoo, but I think we also wanna create an environment where they feel welcome to come visit. And in particular, one of the experiences that, um, was told to me was a friend in Montana who went to go visit her grandkid, wanted to take them to the library, and immediately felt unwelcome, because, you know, there were little stuffed animals on the shelves, and they took them down to play with, and they were told, no, 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 that's not for playing. Um, and so, took them away and put them back on the shelf, so then tried to bring out a book, and were reading it, and her grandson got excited and maybe a little bit too loud for them. And so, they were shushed and reprimanded, and she said, the whole experience just made her feel really bad. Like, she didn't feel like her grandson was, you know, completely out of control, just not quiet. You know, I think that quiet is a really hard expectation when we're talking, you know, toddlers, preschool age. Um, and that's really the target audience to me for the library. One of my greatest priorities throughout my career has been supporting early literacy, uh, supporting families with young children. Uh, again, because, you know, I, I believe, you know, when you foster that love for reading, that love of learning early on, you're just setting, setting, um, kids up for greater success uh, throughout the rest of their school and in, and in life. Uh, so, I've always felt like the library, like, if there is one priority we have, it is really fostering that early literacy with our young children. And so, so again, you know, sort of working on, uh, loosening up that expectation so that way, families do feel comfortable coming into the library. Uh, you know, that maybe before noon, we have quiet hours, but after two o'clock, when the middle school kids are out, we get a little noisier. Uh, because I want them to come to the library. I think it's better for them to be at the library and having fun there versus maybe just out on the streets. I mean, who knows, I don't, I, I don't know where else these kids would go if they weren't coming into the library. Uh, my second current focus has really been a collection refresh, and that is because I, from what I've gathered, there's really been no comprehensive assessment of our collection, which means it's, it's gotten pretty bloated with items that are not checking out, I mean, haven't checked out in ten years. And so, trying to bring that collection back down to a more appropriate size for our community, uh, and, and in turn, also then opening up space for people to come to the library, sit, gather, for us to do programs. Um, but we're having a hard time now, because there's just so many books. Uh, but also...
Oddly enough.
Yeah. Yes, oddly enough. I mean, to just put it in perspective, I think we've got around seventy thousand books in our collection. I would say about, you know, forty-five of those are in the main library in Jackson. At my last library, we had about half of that, so it's just...
Why do you attribute that to just different literature habits, or just not awareness, or why do you, I mean, it's like curiosity?
Difference between here and there.
No, like, why the different books aren't being read, they're just not popular, or they're just different?
Yeah, I think just, just some, some things go out of date, some things were, you know, pop- popular for a period. I mean, especially you think like political commentary, you know, that's really popular for the six months the book first comes out and then, I mean, people don't really necessarily. And, and then just, yeah, general interest, you know, po, uh, authors are popular for certain periods and then, you know, kind of fade out.
Plus with the electronic age, I mean, yeah, a lot of times I think people just start to read, read their book on Kindle, one of these things, Kindle, computer, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we still see a lot of engagement with our digital, like we have two digital apps, Kindle and Hoopla, and we see lots, lots of checkouts, lots of engagement there.
That's my, my, my wife, I mean, I think she's a member of three libraries for that very reason.
Yeah.
Finish a book.
Absolutely. And, um, and so, yeah, so as I'm, you know, assessing the collection and seeing what's there, you know, the, the focus also is, you know, removing these books that people aren't necessarily interested in anymore, but then trying to bring in new books that, uh, people do really want to read. And I, and I think, you know, sort of the mindset shift there is that, you know, the, the book's value comes from its usage, right? Like the best, the best life for a library is that it is used and loved and read so much that it falls apart and we have to throw it away, right? A book that just sits on the shelf is hardly useful to, to the community. And I mean, in particular, uh, one of the books that came in, it was on an auto order shipment and it was like a 2025 U.S. statistical handbook. I mean, it's $200, it's, I mean, great information, right? We should all know who our congressperson is, uh, but no one's looking at that book. I mean, one, it's information that they can find online, but two, it's just less of interest. And so, yeah, the information is wonderful, the information is great, but not useful. So then how valuable is that book to the community?
She's saying, she's saying bad things about politicians and I think I agree with her.
And so, uh, and so then in looking at our budget, one of the things that I have been trying to work on is, you know, shifting our funding towards, um, increasing that book budget. And that is just a reorganization, reprioritization of, of the, the current library funds to then shift money back over into that book budget. So that way we can, um, purchase more books, uh, that is of interest to the community.
Just on that note, uh, so what do you see as like, are you seeing like, like more electronic books checked out or more physical books? Or I'm sure it's a mix of both, but it kind of, what's that look like? I mean-
You know, I think, you know, when, start having ebooks, people thought, oh, we're never gonna want the physical, you know, the physical book is gonna go away, but I think it's kind of like cash. People love having the physical book in their hand, uh, so we still see that need. I think digital comes in especially for audiobooks because it is so much easier to download that audiobook onto your phone versus carrying around the big CD case.
That's fair, that's fair.
That's my biggest thing when I go on a trip. I'll have a CD player in my motorhome.
Are you still seeing books like, so I'd call them like almost like a classic where the red fern grows, they still out and about?
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and again, in this, in this discussion, I'm not saying that, you know, we want to get rid of all of those. There's certainly, um, a need to have those classics in there, um, even if they're not necessarily checking out, it's kind of a, uh-
Benchmark.
Yeah, and, uh, and, but one of the things we have tried to focus on is, you know, with, with schools and required reading, we want to make sure we have those classics in the library, like, cause, you know, at the last minute, they're, they're gonna come in with their kid. My kid has a report on Fahrenheit 451 due tomorrow, do you have that copy of that book? Uh, so trying to make sure we focus on having those, um, in the library. And, um, and yeah, we still see plenty of classics still go out. I think some of the sort of considerations is, you know, is this a copy that would have been on the shelf when my grandparents were coming to the library? Yeah, that might not be appealing to, to some people, so then let's get a newer copy, right? Like a newer edition and we'll see the circulation just go right back up. People still love those classics, absolutely.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem making the library, you know, welcoming. It's probably, it's probably a happy medium there, cause-
Yeah.
Not trying to be a grump, one of my pet peeves, you'll see some woman or man at a store or some kid, the kid's just kicking the hell out of them, tearing stuff down. They're going, oh baby, here, here's a little, here's something, be happy. And they should probably get the helicopter treatment, but I don't think you can do that anymore today, that kind of wah wah wah. Gently, of course.
Well, I mean-
One of the things that I noticed, I heard you say that grand, her grandmother didn't think the child was acting. I haven't met a grandparent yet who doesn't think there's potential for it. That's a poor example. He included.
Okay.
Yes, and, 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 I mean, we do have a code of conduct. There are certain behavioral expectations that, you know, we are, you know, we expect of any patron. And that may be, uh, and so, yeah, it's not like we're just letting kids get away with everything, right? Like they, they have to meet these expectations. And I think it does help a little bit when, you know, we, like, this is expected of an adult and so this is the same expected of you. Like you need to meet these expectations. And for the most part, we, um, I mean, we have some kids that give you attitude, but most of them, they, they want to come to the library, they want to come in, so they, they work, we, we've gotten good at working with them.
So your fine fee policy, let's go over that.
Yeah, we'll go into that one. Uh, this was again, one of the things that I instituted in Montana that we, um, saw a lot of positive feedback from. Because again, overdue fines are another major barrier to service that prevent people from coming into the library. And they typically hit the vulnerable populations that we want coming into the library, right? Um, you know, low income, um, but most important, to me, most importantly, it's kids. I mean, if we're fining kids when they don't bring in a book on time, which isn't even necessarily their fault, right? They give it to their parent, please return this back to the library. Parent gets busy, they return it late, well, the fine is still on the kid's account. And so I, I personally have issue with fining children that, uh, you know, don't have a means of even paying back the fine to begin with, but-
Well, the, the one, the question I had on this one was the new book on the market, you know, that everybody, excuse me, everybody wants. And, you know, if you're going on fine free thing and so you don't know when that book's ever coming back for the next person to come in. So that's kind of the question on that one is if, you know, then you're just checking it out, but you have no clue when it's gonna come back.
Uh, I think that there are sort of mechanisms in place to help prevent that. And I guess just my quick question is, um, I can kind of do a overview of the policy here and then we can go in deeper into the policy or, I mean, we can go into the policy right now?
Well, excuse me, I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of, you know, being fine free. Uh, we've known people in their nature, you know, if, if you don't give them any limitations, they will definitely take, take it in and, and run with it wherever the way they want. You know, so that's, you know, that's the only thing that scares me on that. A child, you know, on a child book, there's, it's a different, I understand what you're, when you're coming with that, because they are not ultimately responsible, the parent is. So, and so, uh, but I'm just, you know, I'm looking at the standpoint, well, you know, my, my, uh, my wife checks out books every once in a while and, oh, I want that one. Oh, it'll, you know, and she sees the online reservation, she, okay, it's supposed to be in this period of time. So if, you know, the expectation for the next customer is, oh, it's not there, who knows when it's gonna come back?
Mm-hmm. I understand that. And I think, you know, so some of the mechanisms we have in place is our new books are limited to four at a time. So people aren't walking out with, you know, all the new books off the shelf. So it is, uh, you know, it is limited. And then within that policy, you know, if you have more than three overdos, you're automatically blocked, which means you can't check out any books, you can't use the library computers, you know, your, your services are suspended. Um, if your fines are over $10, services suspended. And in my experience, that, like, people want to be able to use the library, so they will bring those items back. Um, and so-
So there is still mechanism, just when you first see where it says fine-
Oh, yeah, I get that.
You know, when, when you look at that and-
What about removing the fines for books that you don't want? I mean, just like-
But no, I, I understand that if, it, the, the fine free name feels like a free-for-all, right?
Right.
And, uh, but no, it, it really isn't. There's, um, still things in place to keep people accountable. But, you know, when I, when I instituted it, this at my last library, you know, the, we call them commissioners, the commissioners there had, you know, similar concerns. I also had a, a separate board of trustees, similar concerns. Um, and what we found is that largely the people that return their books, return them on time, they're gonna do it whether or not they're fined. The people that are never gonna return a book or be, you know, sort of habitual offenders, they're gonna be the habitual offenders and we know who they are. And so we didn't really see, um, you know, we didn't really experience any major negative impacts, you know, from the policy. Um, you know, I think it's, it's, it's easy to sort of like assume the worst, right? People are just gonna run off with all the new books and they're never gonna bring them back. Uh, but I, I think that when it comes to the library, we find that people are much more considerate in that regard. Uh, cause they want people to return the book that they have on hold on time, so that way they get it.
I, I understand, but it's just one of those-
I don't think it was five cents a day when I was a kid, I'm pretty sure. I'm like, it costs for inflation, I guess maybe it's, you know, doubled, but not really, you know? It's not, it's not even, it's probably punitive at that point.
Yeah, that, that's largely the feedback that we are getting, you know, now having come back to a library that does have fines is it, it, it feels punitive. There are, it, it just seems to cause more discontent with patrons coming in and, oh, I, I have a fine? It's, it's, even though we are doing our best to, to, you know, not make it a big deal, there's still just this inherent sense of shame that you have a fine. And, and so then that kind of creates the, the conflict with the patron, which we're just really trying to avoid. Like I want you to use the library, I want you to come in and check out these books. I'm not trying to nickel and dime you because, I mean, we are really nickel and dime everywhere else.
Literally are, but yeah.
I, I would have a question then, so if you're, if we're not doing fines, whatever, um, at what point do you see that book as not just overdue, that it's now a lost book and you charge somebody for it?
Yeah, so, um, excuse me, my, um, sort of the, my process is, you know, day one overdue, um, you have up until day nine, or day 89 to return the book, no fine, no penalty, we just take it back. At day 90, you now own the book, I'm charging you for that book. And, you know, and so sort of, and you own the book.
Okay, 90 days makes reasonable in all aspects, yeah.
Now you're charging what we purchased or what the book costs?
The list price of the book at the time of purchase.
The new purchase. Where you have to replace it.
Then when do you replace the book? I mean, somebody's waiting for it, I mean, you replace it before that or ahead of time?
Yeah, um, depending on the title, I mean, cause obviously if it's something-
In demand?
In, yeah, if it's, if it's in demand, then yes, we will work on getting a replacement copy. Um, but just easy that at day 90, some libraries try to do this, like, it's still on your account, so please bring it back. And I just would rather, you know, at day 90, it's yours, we're moving on, we're moving on and getting a new book.
So what is the average time that somebody rents or borrows a book? And that's something I figure out, like, I mean, is it, two weeks is what it's supposed to be, right?
Three.
Three weeks, okay. Then, yeah, that seems like a long time to have the book out, especially if somebody is wanting it. I mean, I don't know if that's-
Yeah, except if you go on a trip, it became really short.
I think, you know, one, with five branches, if we do see something that's in very high demand, I mean, it's not out of the norm for us to have purchased multiple copies for the branches anyways.
Okay.
So it was kind of that built into. Let's see. But, you know, so typically, you know, libraries that, um, have instituted a fine-free policy, you know, they see an increase in usage, a higher rate of return of library materials, you know, in the long term, and an improved relationship with the community. We, we really saw this, uh, in, in Montana when we instituted this. Again, didn't really see this massive increase in, you know, lost books never coming back. It, it actually overall went down.
No, I think you pretty-
Yeah.
I would still, when you go to publish this as rules and everything else, I would still change the name from fine-free to something else, you know? Our, our book accountability, you know, something, you know, as, as we try to be a gentler, kindler thing, but we still want to keep enforcement, I would say still come up with a different idea for a name for your policy, if that makes sense.
I, I understand, I just, I, I've never heard of another library call it something different, so this is just seems to be the term everyone goes with, but I, I understand.
I may, I may be the only one, but I just-
No, you just said you were thinking outside the box, so.
Yeah, I can, just might need a minute.
That's fine.
About extended reading.
There you go. And so then my final step, um, and it ultimately kind of circles back to that first action item of, you know, goals for the library, uh, is community outreach. Uh, so meeting the community where they're at, participating in local events. Um, and again, this is where kind of goal, knowing the goals of the library will be helpful because you can easily try to do, you know, everything all at once. Uh, but so really kind of target, you know, the areas, uh, areas of the community that we want to reach, but, you know, participating in local events, you know, that's maybe hosting a booth at the farmer's market or, you know, we did this in Ione, we had the library open and served hot cocoa out of that for the Christmas event, that was a lot of fun. Um, but it's really about trying to kind of get outside of the library walls and meet people where they're at. And, uh, you know, that might also be a book club at the local coffee shop. Uh, or, uh, one of the things we did that was a lot of fun was a community scavenger hunt, uh, to kind of get people, you know, out and about. And then sort of the second part of community outreach is looking for community partners. Cause in the end, my goal is not to duplicate services. I don't want to, you know, uh, provide social services in the way that like the health department might be, but how can we then partner and support each other, right? Like how do I get the word out about what you're offering? Um, or maybe fill in some gaps that, you know, that they're experiencing or, you know, things that they can't quite meet. And so, the end. Any particular questions before we get into sort of the more specific items?
I'd say you're winning.
Thank you.
Are you talking to Acra at all?
Am I, excuse me?
Are you speaking with Acra at all?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So President Cruz, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. So this was discussion and direction. I gave you my direction, you know, my, my half cent here on your five cent policy. Anybody else have any?
No.
Any thoughts? Everything, everybody good with everything? Okay. So I don't think we need to do any voting on this one, do we?
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if we were, we were lumping them all together. Cause we do need to take action on the two policies.
Right.
Okay.
So agenda item-
So we need to adopt the policy, I guess that's the motion.
Yeah, there's, uh-
Well, there's, there's a couple more.
There was a presentation item-
I got it, okay, got it.
And then there are two separate library policies.
Perfect, okay, that's-
Yeah, we haven't got the one really yet, I don't believe.
Yeah. We kind of ventured into it and I was a little confused, sorry.
I know where you're at, okay, we're caught up.
Cause I was, I was just following-
You're fine.
Come on, now I'm stuck on the computer. There we go. Okay, why was the presentation? Cause I opened up the same thing all over again. Okay, your actual fine policy.
Well, I think the next one is technically the-
Did I miss, okay.
Collection management.
We're at 5C right now.
Yeah, excuse me, 5D.
I think the only question, thing, one thing I have about five D is, um, how, how it's developed, collection. And recognition professionals in the field, endorsements from recognized professionals, publication, some of that's okay. But sometimes I look at some professionals and you go, what the hell are they doing? Um, so I'd always kinda have that in back of your mind, just because they're the professionals, doesn't mean they outweigh the people out here, you know, in our community.
Absolutely.
It's like, I think many, many years ago, they, they said the bumblebee couldn't fly. And people were like, well, tell that the bumblebee, and then they figured out, well, actually, if you do this or that, they figured out how a bumblebee could fly, you know, weight, mass, wingsize, whatever. But, so, the professional said the bumblebee couldn't fly.
Well, just like when they said Pluto wasn't a planet and I was like, that might be your fact, but it's not my fact.
Yeah, exactly. Just keep a little common sense in it.
Okay.
And you know, one more thing I'd say as far as.
What's your, oh, go ahead, sir.
One more thing, uh, the collection objective, second paragraph. I think his primary service commitment is to the people within its service area. Period.
Period.
That's everybody. Without going into all the this, that, this, I mean, otherwise you probably forgot something, you know, um. I wasn't sure what human condition is. Is that dead or alive or, I mean, I don't think dead people read books, I mean.
I think it's more, um, uh.
Don't worry about it.
I, I mean, more like ability, disability.
They're people. So I thought, and, and we just put, um, let's leave it at, uh, within its service area, um, the people in service area, that's everybody.
Where are you at?
On item five D, Amador County Library Collection Development and Management Policy. It says, the first heading is collection, and collection objective on the second paragraph, about the first sentence. I just take out the including people of every age, education, background, personal philosophy, religious belief, occupation, economic levels, ethnic origins, and human condition, I just say just people.
Service area, period.
That work for you?
Don't bother me.
Okay. It's simpler.
Well, and as you mentioned, there's gonna be something that's missed.
Otherwise you missed something.
Keep adding to that list.
What about, yeah, yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any problems with the, uh, library collection development and management policy?
Did you wanna add CDs in there for Jeff? He's got CDs, DVDs, but no CDs, I don't know.
Well, you know, the worst thing is, there's, you know, I, I'm, I feel like a Sony Betamax right now, you know, I'm like, I'm, my last of my vehicles.
You know, one, one thing you, one thing, I do have one thing, you talk about special collections. There may be some stuff in our library that's not always accessed extensively that may really go back to this county's history or this county. I try to keep that, you know, almost like the mining type stuff, some of the stuff that's basically to this county, to the past, almost like an archive.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, you know, in my sort of collection assessment, that is really excluding local history.
Yeah.
Cause that is so important to the area, you're not gonna find it anywhere else.
Exactly.
Um, local history is very important. So, yeah, we do have a California archives to just talk more about like general history of the area a- as well as a mining specific archives.
Do you recycle things up from like the archives ever at all? Like bring things in from the, I mean, the archives, I was there a while back and I was like, there's a lot of stuff that we store that just probably sits, but.
Yeah, I mean, I typically send things to them.
Yeah, that's why I figured. It's kinda like the MO down there.
Just some things that aren't necessarily appropriate in the library, um, just because we're dealing with high use.
Right.
Uh, usually, and like I had a scrapbook, it was a historical society scrapbook and I just thought, oh, God, this thing is gonna get thrashed. So let's just send that to the archives, that just feels like a more appropriate place for it.
And with the general collection description, I mean, what, what's the methodology behind that as far as like what? I mean, there's so many platforms out there, I guess is a question. I don't know what, how do you determine what platform to use? There's like Kindle and there's audiobooks, there's Audible, there's a ton of different things. How do you determine what platform to use? Is that, is that just based on people's request or how does that go?
Uh, request availability, um, so like, for example, you know, we have been in the past collecting audiobooks. Uh, I am anticipating that since a lot of people are doing that digitally, that we will start to see that collection fade. But something like DVDs is still, you know, hanging on because we have areas of the community that lack cell service, so they can't do streaming. So that one I see sticking around a lot longer. So it, it's largely based on demand and then, of course, within the confines of our budget, we can't, you know, obviously get.
You mentioned a little digital divide, I mean, how, how does that factor into this? I'm not trying to belabor the point here, but it's like, how do you bridge that? I mean, you got people that, I mean, I, I was down at the Ione branch here a while back and I was surprised to see somebody came and used a computer, I'm like, I got one in my, in my hand. I'm like, why did you go down to the library? I just, I was kinda curious, but I guess just letting you use that, those services.
Absolutely, uh, you know, just recently, I mean, this happened within the last month. It was, um, you know, a citizen that's been here forever, no computer, no internet at home, but he needed a burn permit, well, you have to do that online and you have to have an email. He didn't have an email, you know, doesn't have a computer, so we were help, we're helping there, helping him there.
I didn't think anybody saw me do that.
It was you. Sorry, I just, I just.
I, I've been there numerous times, I, I had to help a, a lady, uh, a while back and it was, I had to ask her personal questions, I'm doing the input and I'm having, cause she has no computer, no nothing. And I kept having to ask her, she's like eighty-nine, are you pregnant?
I'm gonna say.
No, actually, we hit on there's one of my pet peeves, I mean, it's, I don't mind going, going and stuff on a computer, but there should always be a way people do it in paper. I mean, yeah.
Agreed.
So, okay. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
We're moving to adopt this.
Adopt the policy.
With the changes?
As amended.
With the.
Amendment.
A period with the amendment.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All for the vote?
Thank you, Chairman Brown.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
Okay, last, uh, on this is library adoption of, library, adoption of library fine policy.
Uh-oh, this is where Jeff's getting it.
Yeah, this is where I get into trouble, but I also got a text from someone, good grief, pay fines. It's so rude to keep the books others are waiting for. So, going on, uh, we already kinda hashed this already.
Hashed some of it, um, and I mean, I guess it could just be as simple as it's, this is our fine policy. Our fine policy is that ninety days overdue, you own the book.
You bought the, you bought the book.
Hey, support your local librarian. Yeah.
So.
I'm okay with what you're proposing, I mean, and see if it works, if it's okay.
Is there any way that we could do this, but also have it stated somewhere that we're waiving fines, but the suggested donation for being late?
Should you feel the Catholic guilt?
Yes.
Of being late.
Do you accidentally feel like a decent human being today? No, I don't know. It's more of an honor system.
Yeah, uh, at my last library, when we, when we did this, I mean, we would have people, what? But, but I'm late, I have to pay a fine. I'm like, well, should you feel so inclined to donate to the library? You know, here you go, you can assuage your Catholic guilt.
Here's our jar.
Yes. And we actually found we got a lot more support that way. People willing to, willing to donate and support the library versus, you know, feeling have to.
Yeah, big difference, especially in this town.
Supervisor Crew, any statements?
Would, uh, PG&E let you off the hook for your bill if you came in and wanted to just make a donation? I think there is a sense of responsibility, I mean, come on, we're not talking about a lot of money here. But we're letting them shirk their responsibility, pat them on the back, they throw us a few bucks and out the door they go. That's just me.
I understand.
Do we send letters telling people that they have overdue books?
Yes, uh, that is one of the things that I started doing, um, at the beginning of the year. So at day twenty-one, when, at day twenty-one, I mail a letter to people who have overdue materials to let them know, you know, hey, if you don't return these, this is gonna be what you owe. And, uh, since I've started doing that, I've, I've actually already seen a lot of books already just coming back because they're getting that reminder. Um, when I'm getting to day ninety, I am, uh, removing less and less books from our system. Um, actually, a few weeks, none. So that's, that's been pretty positive.
They get an email at all or?
Uh, we are, we are.
It should be an automated thing, I don't know, just like it's.
Maybe they get their emails at the library.
We do send email.
Well, some of them probably do. You got a lot of email waiting for you.
We do send email if you have that on file, uh, but some, some still don't.
Okay.
Uh, my only question is, why are we waiting ninety days and maybe just like sixty? Cause I know the first thirty is, you know, you getting initial communication, why wait till the full ninety?
I, I don't have.
I think sixty is probably generous, if you're not gonna find them, I think that's probably.
Yeah, that's kinda what my thought on it.
I can live with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a specific reason on the ninety, that's just what I have typically done in the past.
I'll make a motion, we approve it with the sixty day change.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Call for the vote.
Uh, Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
No.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
I'm sorry, Pat, I gotta vote aye.
Okay.
Do we wanna, uh, bring this back in nine months or a year and, and see how it's doing?
That'd be a good idea.
Bring it back in a year.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, cause.
I'd be better about that.
It's, it's one of those things, if, if people wanna take advantage, but, you know, it's, I'd hope they don't.
Do you suspect that if you send out a letter that said we're, for this year only waiving all of your fines, that we'd get a whole bunch of books back?
I, possibly.
When does this policy go into effect, immediately or? I don't know, I didn't see the date on there.
I signed it.
Well, there you go, okay then. Very good, we'll get that done today.
Yeah, cause I realized the second part of the, the memo was our current outstanding fines and whether or not we would want to address those. There is a possibility that, you know, if we waived fines, we could get those materials back. There's also just a little bit of an issue as far as outstanding fines. I mean, we've got outstanding fines going back to two thousand and some of that money we're never going to recoup and those books are probably long gone. We're also probably looking at fines for people that are probably no longer here, whether physically, corporally. I don't know if the board wants to address that as well. Or, you know, we can keep it where current fines, current, currently billed fines stand.
So even if we were to waive all fines, that we'd still have a record of, well, you know, you have four books that were out that we waived and.
Cause, I mean, cause, yeah, cause this would be currently and moving forward, but there's still obviously all of the, you know, books, you know, last week that, that accrued overdue fines that are now posted to those accounts.
And if there's a person who chronically checks things out and never brings them back, we see the Billy has not returned a book in twenty years, uh, you know, do we cut him off?
Well, that's what she said earlier in our normal policy, there was three, three books.
It was three, okay.
Thirty more days and then pay for the book.
Okay, good.
Waiving fines in an effort to get our books back, no shame, just bring them back, please, thank you.
That's what I'm saying, if you want, I mean, to get them back, you just say, hey, you got, we just changed the policy, but you've got thirty days to bring the books back or you have to pay for the book. So that way they give them, you give them a grace period, anything beyond that, you're gonna pay the old fine or the book, whatever it is. But I would say that thirty days, this is your big jail, get a jail free card, might wanna use it.
Sounds good.
Okay. You got your marching orders?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And, and as I say, her, her husband is ex-airforce, so.
Well.
Had to, had to go with the marching orders.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Air Force actually marched at one time or another.
No way.
Okay, five F, review and possible approval of the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Board, Board Supervisors Meeting Minutes. Anybody have any changes?
Nope, not me.
Supervisor Crew?
No, they're okay with me.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Thank you, Chairman Brown?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Crew?
Aye.
Supervisor Cornell?
Aye.
Supervisor Epperson?
Aye.
Supervisor Onetto?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, June tenth at ten AM, closed session begins at eight thirty.